This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, the meeting is now being recorded and I'd like to welcome everybody to our first virtual public hearing on rates and fees as was advertised in the Harwich Chronicle. And everybody understands the protocols that we're dealing with. The governor of the state of Massachusetts has demanded that, you know, we do not meet in person. I'm throwing an editorial comment sadly, I don't think that that's going to change until the spring, so hopefully we'll be able to conduct some in-person meetings perhaps in the spring, but I don't want to get ahead of myself. Also, I'm sure you read this week, I think it was constructive and helpful, the Harwich Chronicle featured an article by Bill Galvin which gave an overview of a lot of the points of discussion that we were, you know, involved with last week or the last meeting that we had, and I think that was a great facilitator. That probably will remain to be seen, but as advertised, as per the agenda, the first order of business is the public hearing on rates and fees, and that will be our first order of business. The rates and fees that will be recommended to the selectmen are designed by a mutual collaboration between the director of golf and the golf committee. The golf public will be invited for their input uninterrupted after the director has made his recommendations. And I have used this kind of procedure and it's really worked well in the past. So number one, please identify yourself. The minutes are being recorded. I'm happy that Mike Surgeon was available to in-person eavesdrop on our meeting. He needs that for his record-keeping. And then actually, I'd ask anyone that chooses to speak to be specific to a topic related to the rates and fees. That's all we are discussing in this hearing. And considering the number of people, I didn't know how to project or anticipate how many we'd actually have, but I'll make every effort within the constraints of time, you know, to include everybody. We're in a hard finish within our two-hour parameter, and I think that's a very accomplishable goal. So, you know, the meeting will have to conclude by 6 o'clock. As I outlined for you, when the public hearing is over, without further ado, we'll immediately convene our special meeting to recommend rates and fees to the selectmen. So I guess we'll start with Roman Greer, and Roman's voice is kind of in disrepair, so bear with him. Actually, he'll just try to touch on some of the goals that we established for, you know, the rates and fees to share with the selectmen. And also, you know, with some specifics, he'll go into the recommendations that he made, and then, as you know, the committee made some counter-recommendations, and that's what we'll proceed with. So Roman, if you would.
Thank you, Clem. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm sorry you have to put up with me in a little respiratory disrepair. I've come down with a pretty nasty cold, but I'm happy to be here to present the rates and fees tonight. For any members of the public, the documents that I share are on the golf committee's website under agendas as part of this meeting's package, so if you want to follow along or review those yourself, you're welcome to, they are on the website. Bear with me. Okay, very quickly, I'll go over the goals that I designed for the rates, my rate and fee recommendation this season. Number one was to achieve the appropriate revenue needs without raising Harwich resident annual pass rate. Number two is to increase the revenues to offset budgeted personnel cost increases from FY '19 to '21, which was approximately $54,000 a year increased. That were the result of collective bargaining contracts and statement of wage increases. Number three is to increase cart rates in anticipation of a new electric cart lease that will cost approximately $20,000 to $25,000 more than the current lease. We're currently getting a great deal on seven-year-old carts. As everybody knows, we're looking forward to a brand-new fleet of state-of-the-art electric carts for next season. And finally, to adjust annual pass categories with a focus on Harwich residents and to streamline non-resident categories. If you were part of the last meeting, I know Clem, there's a lot of discussion on this, and there was a motion made to, over the next three years, have just Harwich residents and non-residents and not have any middle category such as Chatham, Eastham, or Orleans. Okay, so the way this recommendation specifically look is I'm recommending increasing annual passes for the Chatham category only by $75. That will put them directly in line with Eastham and Orleans membership numbers and allow us to move those up in unison in the future years. Also, to remove Chatham from the young adult and collegiate eligibility. As far as greens fees go, we wanted to increase all primary greens fees by $5 and increase miscellaneous greens fees by $2 to $5. You'll see exactly what I'm proposing on the rate sheet on the next slide. And then I proposed increasing all car fees by $1, once again, to help pay for the new cart leads, and to remove the member discount on individual range bucket sales. As I presented, those are well-undermarket value and recharge less than it costs us to provide the service. So let me go to what the actual rate sheet will look like next. Okay, has everybody seen that? Clem, can you see that one?
Yeah, it's very clear, Roman. Perfect.
Very good. Okay, so on the sheet, this is our annual rate sheet, and I highlighted any of the changes. So anything highlighted, I'm proposing a change. The proposed change is for Chatham to add $75 to their annual pass and to remove them once again from young adult and collegiate eligibility. That's the only change I'm recommending on annual passes, other than the range pass, which you'll see is at $300. This season, it was $250, and it was a recommendation of the committee to go up $50 on the range pass.
Excuse me, Roman, can you scroll down, please?
Yeah, I'll scroll down right now.
Because I'm missing, I'm in the other way, because I'm missing what you're talking about here. I couldn't see the top.
Okay.
Is that the top right there?
That's it, you have that thing.
Okay.
So that's the annual pass category. Now I'm scrolling down to greens fees. As I mentioned, plus $5 on all major greens fees. You'll see exactly what they're going to look like there. Our new rack rate will be $79 instead of $74. Once again, by going to a 10-minute tee-time interval, we've created a premium experience of the golf course that we believe the market will bear. And then in the miscellaneous fees, as I mentioned, a lot of these are midday and twilight rates for greens fees, so they all have appropriate raises on between $2 and $5. And then as you get down to the cart fees for members and for non-members, you'll see plus $2. Once again, the golf committee, in their deliberations, chose to go up an extra dollar more than I was recommending on the cart fee. I think it's a good idea because, you know, I may be underestimating the cost of the new cart lease, so I think the $2 raise there is a very good idea to make sure we cover the cost of the new electric cart fleet. And then right at the bottom, you'll see remove the member range bucket, so members and non-members alike will all pay the same amount for a small and large bucket of balls. If you wanted to, once again, in the packet I submitted with this agenda, there's a couple pages of rationale for each category. I won't waste your time by going through those here, but please feel free to review those on your own. Okay, Clem, there's the presentation, and then I'll give me one moment, I'll show you what the final rate sheet will look like. So this is the final rate sheet we will publish based on what occurs today.
Okay, Roman? Let's see the top of the page, Roman.
Roman? Yes, Clem, I'm here.
Yeah, sorry, we missed your audio portion. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Clem, I think I finished it. So all I wanted to do was present that final rate sheet that showed how all the final changes will occur.
Okay, excellent. I really don't think there's much more. Could you take that down for us, Roman?
I will. I'm working on that right now. Bear with me, I'll get it done.
Okay. And in the interim, people, in terms of order of speakers, you know, I'm going to turn to the general public, if you will, and entertain comments from, you know, the audience at large. And, you know, fairness to everybody, what I'd like to do is, based on the names that I have in front of me, the order of participants, it's a random, it's a random order that's been set by the go-to-meeting platform. So Mr. Wilson, you are my first speaker if you choose to address the committee.
Thanks, Clem. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. I did join you during your meeting on October 6th, and at that point in time also expressed my agreement with the desire to increase the Chatham rates, as you showed, and the fact that, you know, you're overall not increasing the rates for Harwich, I think is a good thing, and as long as the town overall finances support that, you don't have to, let's say, bring in more money. I think that's great. One thing I don't see in this is with the expressed desire of getting rid of the Chatham, Orleans, and Eastham rates over the next three years, I am surprised not to see any increase in that category, you know, for this next fiscal year, you know, to bring them up closer to the non-resident rate.
Would you just clarify that last point that you made?
Yeah, you increased the Chatham resident rate to bring them in line with Orleans and Eastham, I believe. Collectively, that group still has a discount relative to the non-resident rate, and I'm surprised I haven't seen an increase in that category, because I believe the desire is to increase the non-resident rates to get them all into one rate over three years.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, as I outlined, when we go into the regular meeting following, we will discuss various points that have been raised by the general public like yourself. So on my screen, I have Mr. Mark Martello, and I presume you're, I presume you're from the town of Harwich, but Mark, if you can hear me? Would you like to speak?
Yeah, I'll unmute him.
He should be able to unmute himself. I was able to.
Yeah, exactly. I'm not sure if he's there. Mark, thank you. Would you choose to speak, sir? Mr. Martello? I'm going to come back to Mark. Maybe we'll have better luck with, my next victim is Deborah Heffernan. Ms. Heffernan, if you would.
Hi.
Would you like to speak to the committee?
Thank you, thank you very much. I've appreciated the presentation and support what the committee is proposing. I do have a question that came up when Roman was describing the reason for increasing the fees and that the tee times were at 10 minutes. Is that to assume that we will retain those intervals despite what the governor might permit or what the MGA suggests?
Generally speaking, you know, we didn't want to, Ms. Heffernan, we didn't want to respond, you know, directly. The idea is to, you know, gather information from you. We will take that up by committee immediately following, so thanks for that input. Next, I have Ken Dickinson. Ken, if you would, would like to speak.
Thank you, Clem. Thanks to the committee again. I think you guys have done, and gals have done, a lot of hard work here. I know it's probably not going to be well-received by everybody, but it's certainly well-received by Harwich residents, so I commend it and support it.
Thank you very much. Okay, going down my list, next I would have Mr. John Chori. John, thank you.
Can folks hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, my name's John Chori, and I thank you, Clem, and all the other committee members for letting me speak here. And I do want to just make a comment that I am speaking for myself, John Chori. I am a member of the finance committee. I'm not speaking for the finance committee. I have not discussed this with my members. I'm just speaking as a private citizen on this matter. And as many of the golf committee members probably know, that I've been an advocate for a long time on why Chatham and Eastham and Orleans have been paying subsidized rates, and I feel that we should just bring those three towns up to the full rate, not the non-citizens' rate of $1,110 for this next season. I do have a couple of questions. Have you asked how many Harwich members that are present members of the golf course who will be leaving because of the tee time? I know there's many other factors involved besides rates and the rates, but how many members you'll be losing next year? I know of at least three people that it will not be coming back as Harwich residents. If you have done a polling on that to see how many people will be leaving because of other factors. And then how many people, I mean, how many Chatham, Eastham, and Orleans residents that you've spoken to that would be leaving the club if you raised the rates to non-resident And there are a lot of numbers and facts and figures here that I could go over in great depth, but I will not do that. But I just wanted to, you know, within your two-minute time limit, Clem, get those thoughts and my comments out there. I think we should raise the rates immediately to $1,110 for the three towns that are getting subsidized by the town of Harwich, who do not participate in paying any of the debt, principal, and interest that is being consumed by the golf course. And then the other one is how many Harwich residents will be leaving because of other factors like tee times and everything else? And then how many members of Eastham, Orleans, and Chatham would be leaving if they had to face an increase to $1,110? Thank you.
John, thanks for your comments. I view them with, you know, great clarity. I appreciate your concise analysis. Next on my list would be Charlene, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, Pylem.
Yes, hi, Charlene here. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I actually agree with all of the changes that I'm, my husband and I are only been members for the second year now, and to have a 10-minute, what we're doing, keeping that 10 minutes, I think is really a key. We've seen, you know, we enjoy the game so much more when we're not waiting all the time, so I fully support what you're doing with the fees and rates, so we do anyway. Thank you.
Charlene, thank you very much. That's an interesting comment, and we'll have, we'll be able to amplify that, excuse me, you know, in the meeting to follow. I have a waiting person on phone call. I think to activate your speaker, you've got to do a star six prompt, and if you'd like to speak, I do not have your name available to the committee, and that's important for us if you choose to speak. The unnamed, the unnamed mobile number? Jack, I unmuted her, or him, but I had no success there. People, we've gone through our list of attendees, and I appreciate everybody's interest and participation. I just want to go back to be fair to Mr. Martello. Mr. Martello, I am going to unmute you. Did you choose to speak to the committee? Mr. Martello? Mr. Martello must have been called out for something important. I do not have any other input from the general public. Are there any other comments from the general public or people that I've surveyed in addition to? I don't want to shortchange anyone. If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the special hearing on rates and fees and immediately convene our special meeting to discuss the input from the public.
This is Peter Pilon. Can you hear me?
Oh. Sorry. Okay, Peter, you're sharing the microphone with your wife?
I am, yeah. We're both members for the past few years, as she said. I did have a comment, I don't know if it's germane to talk to it here. I noticed in the total proposal, there was a comment on moving the time in the afternoon in which you don't get a point for booking from 2:00 to 3:00. Is it, is this the right time to talk about that, or will be another opportunity?
There'll be an opportunity. In fact, looking forward, Mr. Pilon, I anticipate and expect that we will discuss at length the Chelsea Point attributes at our November 17th meeting. I've got that scheduled to be on the agenda, if that's helpful to you.
That would be wonderful.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. So without further discussion, if I have a motion, I would entertain a motion to adjourn? Anyone?
So moved.
Okay, and a second. John Wheeler, second. John Crook made the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, Steve. Steve and Paul, is that an aye from you fellows?
They still muted themselves.
Yes, it is a yes for me, Clem. Sorry. Thank you. Thanks, Steve. Yeah? Okay. Okay, thank you very much. So at this time, and Mike, it's 4:25. At 4:25, I'm convening the special meeting of the Harwich Golf Committee to discuss input from the general public, and then we'll be seeking a recommendation to move these rates and fees forward to the selectmen. So I've got my committee unmuted, and if anyone would like to start as a point, Jack Conley, I saw your hand up first. Jack?
Roman, can you hear me all right? Sorry, I'm trying to find.
It's really bad, Jack, still. Let me see if you can get it. Roman, I just think you need to have consistency between your recommendations and the rates. I think on your recommendations, you said a dollar, and then on the rates, it went up $2.
That's correct. I saw the same inconsistency.
Yes, sir. So I discussed this with Clem in advance, that I would present my recommendation as I presented it last, two weeks ago, as I presented, and then I edited onto the following recommendation sheets what included the committee's recommendation. So the final two sheets both represented what the committee recommended.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Roman. Would anybody like to speak specifically to the other comments that were raised by Mr. Wilson as well? Yeah, John?
Yeah, well, I'll take a crack at it. Number one, I think two of the people had a comment in terms of, how do we get the Eastham, Chatham, and Orleans rates to the same rate immediately? And we had discussion about that last week, and it was the committee's feeling that the best alternative to that was to raise it in three incremental steps. However, there was discussion to take it all to the non-resident rate, and we decided against doing that, just for a culture shock. Number two, I think another point that came up were residents and non-residents leaving Cranberry Valley next year because of, number one, raising rates or tee times or whatever the case may be. To actually do a survey of people and to find out what their intentions are for next year is very difficult to do. I think we're going to go and just go based on the best assumption in terms of if we lose some residents or some non-residents, so be it. I think we have to find new ones. Or ultimately, if we lose a lot of residents or non-residents, we will try to pick that up with greens fee play, to be very realistic. And then eventually, we'll have to assume what kind of annual pass fee that we need for the Harwich residents if we seem to be losing a lot of members. So I think that was the intention behind all the increases.
Okay, John Wheeler?
Just one comment on the tee times, the 10-minute tee times. We appreciate the support that was vocalized for that. I think in consideration of what do we do with tee times when we're allowed to make adjustments to the current 10 minutes? You looked, and Roman brought to us, made us aware of studies done at the national level and some more regional stuff that dealt with alternative tee times and what it does to the golfing experience. And one of the things that we've tried to do from a larger perspective is to tweak this and that to optimize the golfing experience, everything from hot stove all the way out to the driving range and beyond. And certainly, what we're finding, and it's been verbalized in multiple forms, is that people like the idea, while we prefer to be getting more access to the golf course, the fact that we have 10 minutes allows us to be able to have a better experience on the course itself in terms of starting, stopping, and the lack thereof. So I think the feeling of the committee was that, let's stay with the 10 minutes for now, and then if that phenomenon continues, then perhaps that's the place to land.
John, thank you for that. I'd like to also kind of dovetail on those comments, because in terms of management, I just think, as you said, John, it enhances the whole experience, and it also gives management a realistic chance of actually adhering to goals for pace of play and those kinds of other considerations that really make a round of golf enjoyable versus being out there all day or five-plus-hour rounds. I want to get input from all my committeemen. Steve, I've got you kind of behind the banner, so I'd like to give you an opportunity, please. Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, again, I mean, obviously, I had some different opinions on the rates. I thought we should increase Harwich a little bit, but the majority ruled, so I'm fine going forward, and I appreciate the comments and feedback from... going forward, and I appreciate the, the comments and feedback from, from the public.
Okay, Martha, I'm, I'm moving down my page, so Martha Duffy, if, if you'd like to, Martha?
...for giving their input into this. I would like to see the Chatham, Eastham, Orleans rate up this next year to 1,100. It seems like the only ones that will be increased is Chatham, Eastham, and Orleans over three years, and the non-resident rate will stay the same for three years? Am I correct? No?
Roman?
No, it's my, it's my understanding, Martha, we were going to just continue with our pre-existing standard, as it were, of every other year increasing the rates for the Harwich residents. So that would be added on to the rate increases following two, two years for, for the non-residents as well.
Oh, so they would increase every other year?
Thanks. We would stay consistent with our every other year approach, and then...
Thank you. Paul White?
Thank you, Clem. I think John Crook did a really good job of kind of encapsulating the first couple of comments we heard. Unfortunately, I didn't hear Mr. Chori's full comment. I lost the transmission for a few minutes, but maybe others, I don't know whether he raised a different point, but I was really pleased to hear generally the satisfied reaction from the members of the public and do appreciate their attending today in letting us know of how they feel about the proposals that we've discussed. And in addition, I think it was great gratification for the 10-minute interval to hear the comment that, you know, they appreciated and were curious how we would respond to other restrictions that might come down. I guess as long as people stay healthy, good Lord willing, we, we should be able to stay with that 10-minute interval, and, and I, I got the sense that collectively, we all felt that this was certainly a much better golf experience going forward.
Paul, thank you. Those comments are certainly timely, and I, I'd like to take a moment and, you know, as chair, I'd like to give the committee the liberty of addressing issues as we go along, but I would like to weigh in, Mr. Chori, just as a point of information, and it might help you, and it certainly doesn't mean to change your mind, but the history behind, you know, the Chatham relationship in terms of the, you know, the disparity or the difference between, you know, the annual pass fee, I, I think the sentiment of the committee was simply, and John Crook hit on it, we, we just tried to soften the blow as far as the monetary aspect of increasing the fee was concerned. And, you know, for the record, I, I think it's important to note this, the Chatham membership contribution has been very significant. They've been wonderful members and partners to Cranberry Valley, and I don't think anybody would argue that point. And I just think that, you know, in, in terms of the reality of today's world, the COVID situation that we're in, you know, the response of the committee has been appropriate and measured, and I, I think very consistent with what Roman's goals are as well. So, John, Mr. Chori, that would be my comment, you know, in relationship to what you had to say. In any event, Roman, if, if you wanted to speak to that, I, I just, you know, throw in my two cents worth.
I think John Conley does, too.
Yeah. Jack? Jack, go ahead. Okay. Roman?
Um, no, I've, I've got nothing necessarily to add, Clem. I think the comments by John Crook and John Wheeler really encapsulated what, what our goals were for this rate and fee recommendation, and I appreciate all the comments from the public. I think the public that are attending are very educated on what we're doing, and I think the comments were taken very constructively, so I have nothing to add.
Okay, Dan Conley?
Yeah, I, I don't want to speak for Roman, but I mean, one of the, one of the, I think it was John Chori mentioned how many residents are, will be leaving. We could do a Survey Monkey poll and find out, I think relatively quickly, if you want, and if you want us to believe the poll or whether they're just the frustration. But I know Roman's done that Survey Monkey in the past, so I don't know whether he'd be willing to consider that going forward.
I think, I do have the ability to do the survey, but I think as John Crook mentioned, you know, our, we, we don't necessarily take a poll, and I'm not sure that the response we'd receive would really be very telling regardless. I think we've been working on these rates and fees, this recommendation and analysis for a long time, and I'm, I'm comfortable going forward with it. I'll leave it to you, Clem, though, to, I won't speak for the committee.
I, Roman, I would tend to concur absolutely, and I, and I'll tell you why, everyone. Historically, there's been an ebb and flow of membership. The COVID year certainly has put its, you know, mark on that this year being somewhat unique, but overall, historically, the ebb and flow of members that join, members that leave, it always seems to balance out, you know, in a positive way for Cranberry Valley. I think our product in the marketplace is what has attracted consistently a strong endorsement of the direction we've taken, and I would leave it at that. Any other comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the proposed rates and fees for 2021 as outlined by Roman in his final documentation of, of the rates and fees, which would include everything from annual pass holder fees, greens fees, and all of the miscellaneous fees as, as outlined.
Still motion?
Motion approved. John Wheeler, thank you. Second.
Second.
Okay, second, I, was that Paul White?
Yep.
Oh, thank you. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Okay. Mike, as a roll call vote, that was affirmative, a unanimous endorsement of those rates and fees. And now the last item of business here, as prescribed by the agenda, I have a public comments section, and, and we still have a couple of attendees that, if you'd like to contribute, please feel free. I'll, I'll go by a raise of the hand. I see John on screen. I don't, maybe it's my screen, but John, you're the only one that's visible to me, so if you have anything you'd like to say?
John, thank you. Are you talking to me?
Yes.
Oh, there's three other Johns on the screen there.
I know.
I, I'm fine. I'll, I'll, I'll just listen in. I'm, I'm here, it's a rainy afternoon, I'll just listen to what else you say, and, and, you know, thank you for your time there, and I do have lots to say, but I, I'll, I won't say anything more. But thank you all for letting me speak.
Sure. Thank you very much. Thanks for participating. Yeah, David, sorry.
Yep. No, thank you for giving me your chance again. I think a number of people have spoken in support of the eventual increase for Eastern and Chatham, but gathering by the comments, there seems to be, you know, maybe some questions remaining. I think it would be a fairly easy document for Roman and all the committee to put together to show, you know, a tentative plan between now and the next three years, how those rates could increase, just to show, you know, at what year does the, the Eastern, Chatham, and Orleans group increase and by how much, so that you can get them to the point of the non-resident rates? And everybody sort of has an idea, is that three years from now, is that four years from now, or is that two years from now? Because certainly you've got agreement that people are in line to get them up to that rate. I think if you put together a straw man document, you could, you could show, you know, this is the plan over the next couple of years, tentative plan, of course, subject to approval and final agreements.
David, it may, may just be me, but I think the committee was, you know, fairly clear, it will be three years. It's not going to be four or five, it will be three years.
Right, but I'm just surprised that there was no increase in this year, because this would be year one, yet it hasn't changed. That's, that's my confusion.
Yeah, Steve?
Stephen? Just a point of clarification, David, Chatham is changing this year.
I, I see that, Steve, but, but Orleans and Eastern is not changing.
No, but what we're doing is we're making Chatham this year be equal to Eastham and Orleans, then, then all three will be in step the next two years for the increases to get them to the general non-Harwich resident rate.
Yeah. All right, I'm, I'm understanding you now, but nevertheless, I think if you, if you put that in a piece of paper, people would understand that after this year, it's two more years for Eastern and Orleans and Chatham to be up to the non-resident rate.
Yep, I think that's a good idea.
I think we can, I think we can, you know, take that recommendation, Mr. Wilson, the heart. Mr. Dixon, you're still with us? Okay. People, without any further business to bring before the committee, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. And as a point of information before we do that, the next meeting is November 17th. We, we will be looking at the lease agreements between the hot stove and our professional services for instruction with the Miller Golf Group. And I, I think probably the only other thing hanging chat, if you will, would be our capital project and the solar installation. It's ongoing. Roman, is there any additional information regarding that?
I was not prepared to present that tonight, Clem, but, so no, not at this point. I'd be happy to bring everybody up to speed at the next meeting.
Okay, fine. And I understand, I, I believe, Roman, you have a meeting tomorrow with Griff Rider, and, you know, you probably will be discussing, you know, some of those collateral topics, correct?
That's true. Tomorrow is when our, we, our weekly procurement meeting is with the procurement agent and the town engineer, Griffin Ryder, who's also our project manager. So I, I will have more information coming out tomorrow and, and in the days following, in the weeks following before the next meeting, so I'll make sure to have a comprehensive update at the next meeting.
Okay. Well, staying in alignment with the agenda, I don't want to go into any other areas, I guess, so I would entertain that motion to adjourn. So move. Okay, so move. All in favor? Question, Clem? I'm sorry, Paul? John Crook has a question.
I've got a question.
Yeah, John?
I thought, I thought based on the materials that we sent off for the meeting, that we're going to talk about the hot stove in Miller Golf tonight.
I, I, Roman, correct me, but I thought, I thought...
Sorry, yeah, I, I sent those to everybody for the November 17th meeting, so that you'd have plenty of time to review before November 17th.
I think, and just as a side note, the Miller, Miller proposal doesn't change too much. There will be, because I know that Roman's working on inventory as far as the hot stove's concerned, that's why we will need the time before the next meeting. So we have a motion on the floor, was there a second? Do that? Okay, thank you, Jack. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, adjourning. Aye, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.